Ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, October 17th at 6:00 P.M. I'm going to read to you a letter from our mayor. This is the council president. This is related to the city of Detroit. Detroit Water and Sewer Department versus the city of Highland Park. Case number SC-164991, COA-357040, WCCC-1400197. For their council president. Pursuant to section 5 dash 3B of the city charter. I, Mayor Glenda McDonald, am requesting the city council schedule a special meeting, closed session on Wednesday, October 18th, 2023 at 6:00 P.M. On April 4th of 2023, the Michigan Supreme Court entered a tour in order denying appeal of the Court of Appeals reversal of the trial court order in favor of Highland Park because they were not persuaded that the questions presented should be reviewed by the court. On May 8th of 2023, the city, the Great Lakes Water Authority, known as GLWA, has the parties in the state of Michigan, SOM, as a non-party participant, entered into a confidential mediation with retired Judge James J. Raschett, Judicial Resource Services, PC. Representatives Highland Park, GLWA, and SOM have reached a tentative settlement proposed proposal that is subject to approval of the city council, the Gleeblee Board of Directors, and the governor, subject to legislative approvals and appropriations. This special meeting is called to present the settlement proposal to the city council for consideration in closed session. Following that closed session, the city council will reconvene in a public meeting to take any action that may come out of the closed session. This is, thank you for your attention to this matter. If you have any questions, feel free to refer to the mayor's office, and that is from the Honorable Glenda McDonald. The meeting is now in session. The chair will entertain a motion to convene a closed session.
Motion to move in the closed session.
We have a motion for closed session from Councilman Shafi. Do we have support?
Support.
We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you be kind enough to take the role?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Measure approved, ladies and gentlemen. We will adjourn the public session here at 6:02 P.M. and reconvene in a closed session. Thank you very much.
The recess.
Recess.
Sorry, the recess. Thank you very much.
I wouldn't give you an explanation, but I'm not sure what you're saying there.
Okay, I'll be at the house, and then you can come over and then show me what I can do. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
It's, I can say this, it's supposed to be, it's just too much.
No, but we got to be looking around here. So I said, I hope you'll be there, and we're not gonna be responsible to me. So I said, but I know they want me to get home, so that's why I said, if they're here, but when they come back, they might be doing a list up.
Because you don't talk.
I was so glad they got time. They were down.
So maybe I'll be like, I was suggesting come on, being the chief man.
No, no.
I'm not, unless, I'm not, I'm sorry. Unless you ladies. I was suggesting talking to.
It was bad by council.
And that's why, that's why I said, why they want to keep.
Well, I thought I'd give it up.
There must be a reason, but I may get there by the coming here. We need more of the people. Yeah, so. He never got it. You can pick up. It's so. What? And for example, bottom go through. That has ever happened.
Hey, what's going on?
I've been. We're like.
And when we want to. I don't believe it. No, but.
I might get.
No, I'm sure. Oh, yes, ma'am. I can't think of anything. Okay.
It is tiny, but.
Okay. My, I was. The week, the weeks when I was, the weeks when I was.
And you turn the vans on.
I don't mind, I don't.
I won't. Okay, so, wow, the brands. One more brand.
There's a little doll.
Are you talking about that again? And chief.
Oh, who?
That she's not the principal.
Just that.
Yeah, that's that again.
Oh, that's your ass.
She might, she might have a. Because the answer, okay, was a check. She could give you a piece of your.
It's not you. A million dollars. It's about a million. No, no, just since, uh. Okay, we just want to send.
You said I would. And I.
So the next one. We should.
I was.
She, yeah, she. She said almost.
So we, we could not first. So I've been.
Our city case. So. She, she does. She's my. I'll do this guy. I'm. Falling off. Plus, we started. Still, we need three in Florida in the past five years. And. That's like six million brands. So that's about 10 million out of.
I'm sure.
That. I'm sure that this. Look. Yeah. I can.
Populations 12,000, 400. Let's see. That's about here.
This is.
And about 5 million. Oh, yeah, right. Well.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we try, so that would be.
God. You're good.
Well, yeah, so, but. Yeah, you could, you could add.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or you could ask.
I would say, I have two needs.
Or you could call if you like, either way. No, because I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, we're on there.
This, this, this time, this myself. This.
It was the second million dollar.
In all United States.
Of the nation where I have 269. You know.
Oh, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Then we got the red. But you were ready.
Yeah, no, 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 the reason why. The reason why.
About same size as our town. They got 500, 200, 1000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think she said that from down there. I was going to remind you.
Um, we're about the same as that.
I'm not. Well, I, I'm not going to be, because I think, you know. But I'm sure as far as that. I don't know. I haven't looked at my email.
So here's one.
Say.
Right back.
No, 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 I was. No, no, no.
Yeah. And he had $300. Again, I made. He plays there, they have community. They, they have. But.
Because.
Here's the. And they got about.
So just to make. I'm. I was saying. I know you go to. This is. Oh, that's it. Oh, I think my. That's what I said. I was trying to. But. But you know.
If you say you want to be.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a minute. You see, she didn't even say a word after getting.
I called her. I called her, she had a meeting at her church, so she should be here.
They wouldn't call.
Special. To. Yes. They walk the girl out, and get rid of it. But nothing else to do.
That's kind of. Yeah. Like a.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. But I want you to be. The same. It might. It might. I don't know. Sorry, that. Well, there is. They definitely. But now they're trying to get rid of. They got to help them out of the. Had said before that they wouldn't add them.
No, and this is all, um, these various programs. We don't need to. So. Oh, I got to be done. We have them are. This program, so we. I'll put it in. Want to. Okay. For all the surprising. And he's so small. A couple of young, also do. Or. Yes, exactly. And I'm not so. I don't know what. How. And it's supposed to. They are.
You act it up. I mean, you ask.
So now that he's on with.
Side. So. Like. The real. Brands. You can. Actually, that was right. Do you have any?
That, that you don't see that. But the way you said. They make this much of a holiday thing. They keep the rest of it.
I'm going to get. You said. I'm going to hear about. So.
You know what? Yes, pretty much all people would say that, I would say, oh, yeah.
No, she's the vice president, like that. All the. I said. It's not like time. I say you. Your mom is sitting in my front. Go, go, go. Really, yes.
Yes, she. She was telling me. Yes, she was. She's been here. She's. She probably. They might. It's a problem.
They had, you know, well, um. Get off the elevator. The exit to the Rize. I eliminated, but I did. You know, I did.
And they are operating. They have enough to make that money. You were just.
And then when it paid off. They show. They can get you. Yeah.
We'll see.
They, they. As they get. As they get. As they, as they.
Okay.
Yeah.
They have a lot of.
Online. Yeah, just don't get out of.
No, I wasn't.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, I was. Yeah, I was. Yeah.
I got joy. Actually, I only. I saw you. Yeah, I'm it out.
I don't know.
Yeah, but it's not. Probably. Well, rest, you know, this was a big year. Before that. I'm six foot. Well, I'm.
And, yeah, I was saying that.
We can all. I, I'm sorry. That's. I'm. And I see this. Okay, so now. Yes, it's. I think she's. And I can. I'm.
That's so. This is.
I go. This job. Hey, don't keep me so. The rest. Long to get. I see some business.
Me.
You can't go to the.
So. Oh, that.
Yeah. Oh, you want to work every day.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I know. I know what you're talking about.
So we didn't. So.
Do you have.
Oh, yes.
So, very.
Yeah.
So. It was a secret back.
I was like, it's. Yeah, I, I. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I, I. Yeah, I, I, I was. No, not. I, I was called once. And I kept. And that's.
But I gave.
I had called.
Yes.
I had called. And that one. I got eight. Get about that pay.
Well. It's going on. Right. Every. Every. I was.
Got.
She's still a jerk.
He's still got it over. That's. That's.
That, that one time. One time, uh, when I was. Yeah, one time that. So now when I come up from the knees.
Or she'll say when I left.
I mean, she wanted. You.
What you. Right. You know, that is.
So. That's mentioned. So. Me.
Give this to.
I'll say. But I was.
Oh, yeah. What's that thing?
No, it's in the city.
Oh, I.
Okay, now I got. I mean, it's.
He just. She. So. The people. We always. We. Of course. This. This is when you got worked. Because this is going on. Those people. No, they have. Go by it. I think the patient. Like, I want. They say. Uh, they don't mind. They get a drill. Both sides. But that means so. Now, I can't. And that's. They drip.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not saying I can't. Because so. And she goes like. I really need to be here. But she. Some. But one thing. They didn't know. But not. And I said, oh, no. Don't come. They didn't. But that's your. You're. It's. Well. I actually. When.
You're. You're.
Okay, I was. Uh, I had. Yeah. Under. That's. It makes the people. Because we. The business that we elected. Was. Because the. Mm-hmm.
You didn't want it.
You two gimmies. You know, you know, and then after home bed. Maybe. I was the first one to get to the. They express. I mean, yeah. I just want. Everyone. I am down. And you're seeing. The field. Well, I'm gonna be. Where would we go with your bedroom? Y'all are seven. So that was the point.
I love.
So I'm. And the grandma.
Hopefully. No, they actually.
In California. We're gonna be there. But my grandson kind of.
Now, the kids only like. They had. They go. They go for the.
No.
And if you're.
They not. So. He said, text me. Well, particular. I also know what he texted. Perfect. And he said, when you get down. I got enough. I don't. He said, I don't have to take. Thanks.
Well, the.
This is. My right. No. I need it up.
That has. It was something like, um, I think he's.
Yeah.
There's one.
Jenny.
Yeah.
And three grandkids.
I don't.
Yeah. She has. Look, she. I have.
I thought. Yeah. She got. She know he's like.
I love it.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Oh.
Okay. But that's. I'm gonna go. Walk my. Well, see, but let me say. She can't get. So. It was. So I. She don't. So. I, I did, I wasn't just lying down. Baby. Nah. I'm. I was gonna go to. Uh, that's. I mean. I made. I never. I made a choice. And I thought they. And when I. I said. So I'm. I'm. Then our. It's. Well, we. We. And. So.
I did.
Yeah. She don't. She's. She take some shit. She didn't know. But we. I see. Anyway. Well. I didn't. We.
When you end.
Yeah.
But. I. Right. I. Uh. And she take. They used to be. I know it. Yeah. Okay. So. Once in. Sometimes. You have. They are. Smart. You are. Be the baby. So just. We just see. We be. But. Right, my son. I said, you're.
Because this was.
They're. Yeah. I told you. So. Give the. So. So. Right. And you try. That's the thing. I live. But you don't. I am so. I got. Towards. And. It was. Our. He didn't wait. Saying something. Especially. But. Like.
Yes.
I got.
I think. Exactly. And, and that's.
They don't know how to go. I don't know. So.
Jackie.
I don't. So I mean. One. I have your. But I'm.
So.
Well, I thought. I've been. I told you. I really. I can.
Then.
She didn't. Like I. I just. That he was. And then. And they were. So. Cause he's walking.
Um, that's.
Yeah, he never would tell me.
Uh.
He might not. Right.
Which. You try.
Um.
And we do. Never. They. They. Company. Just. Surviving. Realizing. Thank you.
And they turn the bells.
My grandfather. I mean.
Yeah. So. My. We.
Yeah.
Everyone else. I'm. Not. So. Anyway. But I say. So. So. All the children. I say. By your. I got. We gotta pick out. Oh, they have.
Sometimes. I like. I take.
Okay. I got. Him. I. But then. You get out. Take one. I think.
Yeah.
I'm. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go out the back door.
Thank you.
This. Come. This. Vision. It's. Yeah. They. Other. So. One of the places. It should be. It should have that. They should have all that joint tape. Along. And I have all this. Table. All table. They give them this. So. See everybody. Didn't hear it.
Yeah. I could hear. Well.
I would. I heard. All of. I heard something about. Mayor. And. And. He took all of this. That would be. It was. I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna show you. So what.
They usually. I suppose. Once. And and you. On. The fourth. Is. The second. The second two. The first two.
I love.
The first two. Supposed to be. Is this meeting. That's. All. And the second two today is all that.
He cut it down, but.
And that's.
Nothing. Eventually, what I wanted to do is. I want.
That is what. So. You know. That's. That's. I want. Like. Be. And. Again, I just. Because.
I got the team. Okay.
Sometimes. I don't. And. And that's.
Nah. Have you seen? Yeah. Okay.
You know. But. The first time. Some people. Be now that age. That's why some of the school.
So this is.
The. The way that depends. Sometimes.
Eventually. This. Yep. Straight back. So. Instead of.
So. I'm changing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody pay. They. Yeah.
Those. I.
Now you see me. So he cut all of this off. Out. Cut this out. Got that. So it's a little. This is the. This is the. See. Wait a minute now. Let's go back up here. I'm getting ready. I just. I. I. That's. I couldn't. That's. And. Yeah. Put the. I'm. All. Cause see, you look at it. I. Yeah. But you had to look. See. You know. Look, I'm. Wait a minute. She's. No, but um. I just. I know. What I'm. She just. Knows that. Soft. The future. I don't know. We'll call. So. Back. Oh. They. But I guess. I see. They got. I see. You ask. Like. You. So. Yeah. But I see. Like. And they got all of. What they do. They. They just. I I would. Like. I don't.
If we call it.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm. I know. I don't. Yeah. It's. I. She. You know. And she. Bring. Thursday was the. The.
They.
Just. Okay. Well. I really. Right there. Right there. And then I got. Like. Oh, yeah. I'm not. Oh, no. Well, that's. Seven. I go.
I did. I'm kidding. I actually. I don't.
I. I wasn't. No. Uh. We. But every. I don't. I'm. That's. But he had. I know he asked. So when I. I go. Bad. Picture. They like that. We. Follow. It's. We. I'm not.
But why?
Why is she what?
Yeah.
Because she. It's. She. That's.
We. But. And she. Like. That's. And. That's. I'm. Yeah. She's. I. Oh. Oh.
I call my. They come. So those. But this is. Wilson. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. I.
It was. Basically.
It's. And they.
It was.
Yeah. And.
It's. It is.
That's. I. Okay. They didn't. Oh. Howlers.
Yeah.
Later. So. So I got. Three. So. I'm. First. Happy. Yeah. But then. These are key.
I'm.
You guys. If.
I want.
First. And. So. I mean. Um. You. Well. So. So. And keep. I got. Let me get your. I'm. Come on. Be useful. Sir. Yeah. I'm thinking about you. I'll be home. But. I'll be home. Certainly. I. For. Yeah. Right. It ain't. Right. So. Yeah.
I know. Two.
To. He's. Yeah. We didn't go. We didn't. Up near.
We didn't buy. Then we see.
Pointing. Watch these guys.
Oh. I think.
Why was I watching?
I don't.
So. You're watching. You know. You know. I. And that's. Now they wanna.
I don't know.
Where the school was. Or house. They had to. They wanna put a. Low income house in there. And. And. With us. Mr. Billy. They wanna tear down most of that. And. From. E V. On to the back. Oh. I. Inside. Just. Somebody. And drive. And Jerry. He only. That's. They wanna make that. All stores. All. Like. Store stuff. He. All things.
Right. I'm not gonna change. But I mean. Five years. So I can't. Imagine. I wasn't.
Talking about the old. Uh. Yeah. It's. But it's. That's. Right. Right.
Well, it's.
Yeah. I think that's. And they had developers. On. Yeah. Yeah. It's. The. It's all. What's on? The. If we were doing. If. Way. And they did. And they said. Yeah. So. Cause. This. I was watching. Came in and they. Everything. I want to go. They showed. Um. But I saw. A. Yeah. I mean. Yeah. So.
She said. There. Yeah. Maybe we could just. Yeah. And. I know. Make everyone. Do. One. Well. I'm.
I got.
What? Yes. I know. I can't. I'm just telling you. They're.
Yeah. But y'all. They. Bro. And I said. That's.
I don't. Like. I don't.
Yeah.
Nobody.
Nobody. It's.
I.
They. Again. What we do. Okay. And they need.
I'm sorry. And.
Did you say? Did you see?
They. Man. So.
Go with. We. Mission. It's. Actually. Very well.
About. Send. They feel. And. Yeah.
Yes. She. Oh. I think. Cause you wrong. They. So. She. She don't. Excuse. I said.
Yeah. Cause I said that was.
Right. Uh. Thank you. Yeah. What's going on? What? I. What?
Everybody. They want. They just. They're. It ain't. So. They's been.
I was hoping.
And they. Play. So. I. And. Well. I didn't. That's. They. No.
Um.
We. Uh. We. I mean.
Right.
Okay. You. So. In. We. Yeah. I'm gonna respond. No. Sometimes. Sometimes.
I don't know. Thank you.
I just said. I just. Oh. No. She said. She.
What do you want? Yeah, nah. I'm over. I'm over. Okay. I like the. You want to.
I need to pay. I didn't know I was in debt.
I'm gonna give you a case.
I thought you were just being nice.
Sorry, Tom.
Don't worry about that. This is a clap first. Ain't nothing.
She ain't over here, she got candy ass. Well, you know. Well, when you take it and save it for when you get home. If you take a knife, it's gonna be bad. I got prescription Benadryl, it puts me out.
Six fifty-nine P M. Um, having concluded our closed session, the chair will entertain a motion. To reopen the general session up to the council.
Motion reopen general session.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilman O'Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. If you would be counting up to take the vote for us, Madam Deppis.
Councilman O'Shafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes. Meeting reconvenes at seven P M. Uh, members of council having, um, heard the discussion in closed session. Having heard the discussion in closed session, the chair will be willing to entertain a motion uh, on the closed session meeting.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry.
Say move to approve.
Could you be a little bit more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got you.
Move to approve. The agreement that was discussed in closed session of, um, uh, for, for the terms with, with Great Lakes Water Authority.
One more time.
Sure.
Just one more time.
Move to approve. The term agreement between the City of Highland Park and Great Lakes Water Authority.
Um. Councilwoman Manica, you wanna, um, caucus with Mr. O'Shafi right quick?
Yes.
Just a second.
Mr. O'Shafi.
I have a lot of two.
Yes, Miss Manica, go right ahead.
She's gonna come and join you.
I'm coming.
She's gonna come and join you.
Council President, I move to approve, uh, the settlement agreement between the City of Detroit. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Term sheet.
It says, it says settlement on here.
After that.
Okay, okay. I want to approve the term sheet agreements between the City of Highland Park, the City of Detroit, Great Lakes Water Authority. Uh, case number, uh, S C one six four nine nine one. Uh, C O A, uh, three five seven zero four zero. W C C C one four zero zero one nine seven four.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman O'Shafi to approve the term sheet of ten eighteen twenty twenty-three, the City of Detroit, the Detroit Water and Sewers Department versus the City of Highland Park, case number S C one six four nine nine one, C O A, three five seven zero four zero, W C C C one four zero zero one nine seven four. Do we have second?
Second.
We have second on the floor. Um. Madam Deputy Turck, would you please call a roll?
Councilman O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica, uh, Park.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin, my apologies. Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Thank you very much. Motion approved. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna read to you what we just agreed to. And I don't think the phrase, thank your lucky stars, has ever been more appropriate uh, than what we're about to hear right now. So, this is the term sheet of ten eighteen twenty twenty-three. One, the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Highland Park in the state of Michigan shall enter into a settlement agreement by January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. That incorporates the basic terms set forth below, including mutually agreeable, agreeable lang- release language. That means this will be made public. The various documents referenced and necess- uh, necessary to effectuate this term sheet shall be attached, signed and incorporated as part of that agreement by the, uh, by that date. In addition, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, E G O, will enter, will either amend or replace its July twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen Administrative Consent Order, or A C O, by January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four to incorporate the terms set forth below that are specific to Highland Park. The state of Michigan shall, I'm sorry, it's number two, the state of Michigan shall, A, pay for the reasonable and necessary cost to install water master meters on water lines, uh, and sufficient temporary meters to estimate the shoot sewage flows produced by Highland Park. Metro Consulting will be responsible for conducting the necessary work to install the meters. E G O shall oversee that work pursuant to its regulatory authority. Metro will submit, uh, submit a proposal to E G O for this work, which will include the number and placement location for those meters in accordance, uh, with the provisions below. Metro will consult with G L W A in preparing the proposals. And E G O must approve in writing any proposal before installation of meters or implementation begins. In addition, one, the water master meters and temporary sewage meter devices will be installed subject to GLEW's specifications. Two, the water master meters shall be installed at all open points of connection between Highland Park and Great Lakes Water Authority. Three, upon transfer, the Great Lakes Water Authority will own, operate, and maintain the water master meters. Highland Park shall be responsible for the cost of maintaining and operating the sewer meters. Four, Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority shall agree to a third party and procedures to maintain and operate the sewer meters, including the sharing of data produced by the meters. If the parties cannot agree to a third party or the procedures associated with the operations, the state of Michigan shall identify a third party and prescribe the procedures. Five, Highland Park shall have the same access to the wholesale automated meter readings, that's W A, uh, M R system, and the Greater Detroit Regional Sewer System, that is G D R S S, data for the installed Highland Park water and sewage meters as all other customer communities serve by the Great Lakes Water Authority. Six, Highland Park shall have the right to annually inspect the water master meters and sewer meters upon request. Seven, unless otherwise agreed by the parties, the water master meters and the execution of the settlement agreement and accompanying documentation, Highland Park shall provide full access to meter locations to complete the work timely. And we're on B. This is, again, we're talking about the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan shall pay for work necessary to complete the water main and service line replacement efforts within the boundaries of the City of Highland Park. E G O shall have responsibility for determining the necessary work, including conducting and supervising this work. C, state shall release twenty-five million dollar sewer infrastructure grant funds previously allocated in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three budget to GLEW on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and appropriate the three point, the five million dollar grant for work to be conducted by GLEW on drinking water infrastructure. The state shall, three, H P shall continue to retain Metro to operate Highland Park's water and sewage operations, which includes all billing, collections, maintenance, and improvements. If for any reason Metro ceases to be Highland Park's operator, then subject to the state of Michigan's approval, Highland Park will retain another entity to conduct these operations. Subject to all terms and conditions of the settlement agreement and the contract between the Great Lakes Water Authority and Highland Park, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, and on a, and on a, on a going forward basis, Highland Park shall pay the full amount of GLEW's monthly charges pursuant to the terms of any contract between the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Highland Park. Four, under the state of Michigan, Highland Park will enter into a con- contracts based on GLEW's model contract by January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, covering the period of January first twenty fourteen to December thirty-first of twenty forty-four for water and sewage services. That will include, the settlement agreement and contract shall require all amounts paid for Highland Park water sewer, including industrial waste control and stormwater services, be placed into a trust in which the trustee pays GLEW and any remaining amounts to Highland Park on the same date. Any grants or loans from the state of Michigan to Highland Park for infrastructure projects shall not be part of the, or included in that trust, except to enforce the conditions of this term sheet and the settlement agreement, to the extent that any future, uh, disputes arise between Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority over water and sewer services, which the parties are unable to resolve within thirty days' notice of the time of the dispute, Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority agree to resolve such disputes through expedited mandatory arbitration pursuant to Michigan State statute and a court rule that shall be binding upon them. For a charge or billing dispute, the trustee must place in escrow the amounts in the dispute. Three, once the master meters eyes are installed at Highland Park, Highland Park shall be treated as part of the master meter customer class. Uh, four, for five years commencing on the date of this agreement, the model water contract will allow for Highland Park's max day and peak hour water volume demand to be updated annually as Highland Park continues to dry up its system by replacing water mains and less service, service lines, or by completing other infrastructure improvements that will impact Highland Park's water demand requirements. This is five, under the state of Michigan. Highland Park and E G O will either revise the current A C O or replace it with a new one to incorporate the term sheet, the terms set forth in this term sheet that are specific to Highland Park. That A C O shall remain effective and in effect until January first of twenty forty-four, after which it may be terminated if Highland Park has met all of its terms. And six, until metering data can be used to project water and sewage charges, we will, A, for services provided until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, Highland Park will continue to pay, or the trustee will pay on Highland Park's behalf, sixty-five percent of any and all amounts received by Highland Park in payments of bills for water and sewage treatment services. B, effective January first, twenty twenty-four, subject to the conditions upon execution by all parties of the settlement agreement by January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Great Lakes Water Authority will reduce Highland Park's water charges based on reductions in usage volume due to documented repairs of leaks up to twenty-five percent of its current usage. And C, effective January first, twenty twenty-four, subject to, uh, and conditioned upon execution of all parties of the settlement agreement by January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, the Great Lakes Water Authority will also provide a settlement credit of sixty thousand dollars per month to Highland Park on its sewage charges until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, subject to the following. One, Highland Park may fully participate in GLEW's share and charge process for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Two, beginning January first of twenty twenty-four, Highland Park shall receive the lesser of, A, the current fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewage charges and credit, or B, the new fiscal year twenty twenty-five share and resulting charges. And third, this settlement credit will terminate on or no later than January thirtieth, thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This is seven, under the state of Michigan. Once twelve months of quality metering is available to project estimated annual water and sewage flows, the Great Lakes Water Authority charges to Highland Park shall be based on data and future data. Eight, Highland Park shall increase its water and sewers rates by adopting an interim, interim amended budget no later than December of twenty twenty-three for the period of January first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. For all subsequent fiscal years, uh, Metro shall annually retain an independent rate analyst, subject to the approval of the state of Michigan to calculate necessary adjustments in its water and sewer rates to ensure that the budget for Highland Park's water and sewer operations is sufficient to ensure payment of all GLEW charges and all overhead maintenance and operation costs associated with its water and sewage operations. The analysts will recommend necessary rate changes to Highland Park, and Highland Park shall annually adjust its water and sewers rates in accordance with the recommendations of the rate analyst. Nine, under the state of Michigan. Upon effectuation of the settlement agreement, its attachment and related documents, including the initial funding consistent with this agreement and after recipient by the trustee of one month of Highland Park's water and sewer, uh, receipts and distribution of one month payment of fund to the Great Lakes Water Authority, under paragraph four I, all litigation between the Great Lakes Water Authority, the Detroit Water and Sewers Department, the City of Highland Park, and the state of Michigan shall be dismissed without prejudice.
I'm sorry. With prejudice, with prejudice. Okay, I'm, 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 I'm reading it, I'm having to, I'm having to interpret it as I read it too, so. Uh, brace yourself. The judgment entered in Wayne County Circuit Court, case number two one, I mean, two zero one four zero zero one nine seven four, C case shall be released or deemed satisfied, and Highland Park shall dismiss its pending appeal from that case, from that action. This is Court of Appeals, case number three six seven one nine three. The court shall retain jurisdiction to enforce the terms of the settlement agreement, which will be entered by the court as a consent judgment. B, Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority shall submit a proposed stipulated order of dismissal of Wayne County Circuit Court, case number two zero zero one one five eight nine. Highland Park shall dismiss its appeal in the Court of Appeals, case number three six two four one six, from the Wayne County Circuit Court. Case number two two zero zero four seven five four dash C B, shall release and waive any further challenges to GLEW's rules that were the subject of that action. And D, the Great Lakes Water Authority in the state of Michigan shall, shall submit a stipulated order of dismissal of the Court of Claims, case number two zero two one zero 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 one five one. E, Highland Park and the state of Michigan will submit a proposed stipulated order of dismissal in the Court of Claims, case number one nine zero 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 one two nine dash M Z. F, Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority shall submit a proposed stipulated order, uh, settling, setting aside the amended consent judgment dated June nineteenth, nineteen ninety-six in the Eastern District of Michigan, case number ninety-two C B seven six seven seven D T, and ninety-four C B dash seven three one three five dash D T. And ten, the two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-five dollar cash pond deposited by Highland Park with the U S District Court Clerk shall be released to the Great Lakes Water Authority from the Eastern District of Michigan, case number one six dash C B dash one three eight four zero. And eleven, upon approval of this term sheet by the City of Highland Park, the state of Michigan, and the Great Lakes Water Authority, no later than October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the Great Lakes Water Authority and Highland Park shall submit a signed copy of this term sheet to, and submit a request for a stipulated stay of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Status Conference of all further proceedings in Judge Joseph's case number one four dash zero zero one nine seven four, and all appellate, appellate proceedings from that case, case number Court of Appeals, docket number three six seven one nine three, until January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, twelve, for an execution and approval of this term sheet by the City of Highland Park, by the state of Michigan, by the Great Lakes Water Authority, no later than October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The Great Lakes Water Authority and Highland Park shall submit a signed copy of the term sheet to and submit a request for a stipulated stay of the November second, twenty twenty-three Status Conference and all further proceedings in Judge Berry's case number two zero dash zero one one five eight nine until January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. A signed copy of the term sheet to and submit a request for a stipulated stay of petition for, uh, rehearing in Bank Six in the Sixth Circuit Court, number two two dash one two eight eight until January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. And C, stipulate to a stay of all proceedings in Highland Park's appeal, uh, Court of Appeals, case number three six two four one six, from the Wayne County Circuit Court, case number two two zero zero four seven five four dash C B. And thirteen, this term sheet is conditional and dependent upon a final approval of terms by the governor. Appropriations for funds from the legislature to the extent necessary.
Appropriations for funds from the legislature to the extent necessary, and approval of the governing bodies of GLEWAS and any other necessary party on October twenty-sixth, on or before October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you your settlement. Judge Ratchet, Judge Ratchet, can I lean on you for a second? Could you come out, ladies and gentlemen? I would like for you to see, normally Judge Ratchet wears a helmet and the whole full hockey gear he does. But this is the judge who has overseen the mediation for this case. I wanted to make sure everybody knows who he is. He can take a punch. And I just wanted to thank him. Please, go right ahead.
Please.
You should all be very, very proud of your public officials here for making this deal. This is really a good thing for the city going forwards and for everybody involved. So I, I hope you can be at peace with this. It provides an opportunity for the future in very positive ways. And it takes a lot of the ugly stuff that happened in the past and puts it behind it. So really be very proud of your elected officials for helping work this out. She earned my respect a long time ago, the devil. Throughout this process, so, and she worked really, really hard for it, so. I, I really do hope. This is a good thing.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. And since Lions are winning, I want you guys to meet the defense and offense for the city that is. It's Jeff Thompson over here. All right, you could.
Now, and Calvin Grigsby, who was online. Two against a hundred. I just want you guys to consider those numbers. Two lawyers against a hundred. And I had a chance to read some of their briefs, and I'm sorry, I was just stunned that like, like Neo in The Matrix dodging bullets, that's them. I just want you guys to know, that's, that's what they did for us. They was truly dodging bullets for us. And I wanna thank you. Okay.
Tim Dimer.
And Tim Dimer, who is, who's not here with us, but we have to thank all of those people. So, ladies and gentlemen, having concluded all business related to the city of, I mean.
Council President.
I'm sorry.
Can we make a quick acknowledgement?
You know what, yeah, hold on just a second. Hold on, we, you know, we, I'm, I'm, I had to read it like y'all did. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Can I ask him to please read the motion again?
Okay, yes.
No, no.
Yeah, 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 it's done already. I'm saying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I am in disbelief. You have to forgive me. I'm reading this and I'm not believing that it actually happened. We voted first, we voted, we voted for it. We did, we, we voted, and then we read it. I'm just, I, I'm afraid Groundhog Day, I don't wanna wake up and we gotta come back here tomorrow. So, having concluded all business related to the special meeting.
Council President.
The chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make a quick acknowledgement if I could.
Go right here.
Okay, I wanted to acknowledge some people that are sitting in this audience today who went up to land scene and fought the good fight. Your vote, your voices were heard. The governor heard you, and she listened to you. The state, understand that this is a very good agreement. The state has tied themselves to you. They have tied themselves to you. So if you fail, they fail. I wanna send a much appreciated acknowledgement to your state rep, Mike McFaul, who fought very diligently for you. I wanna send an acknowledgement out to the governor of the great state of Michigan, Ms. Gretchen Whitmore, who stood by the city of Highland Park, and I told you she wouldn't let us down. I wanna recognize Ms. Kathy Square for her diligent fighting. And H P, we live on, we survive. They've been after us for years, we made it, we're here. Give yourselves a bow. You fought like hell, and I'm proud of you. Thank you, H P.
We cannot forget, I gotta, yeah, I was about to say, I got a call from Stephanie Chang this morning.
That's right, and Ms. Stephanie Chang.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for that, please forgive me for that. And Ms. Stephanie Chang, who fought diligently on your side as well. So many people behind the scenes fought diligently for the city of Highland Park. They heard you. Your voices were heard.
Thank you so much, Ms. O'Shafi. Ladies and gentlemen, let me just, before I close this out, and I will be closing this out. Twenty-three years I lived here. In the last ten months, I am very proud to say that the mayor of this city has given her blood, sweat and tears for this town. You have no idea how peaceful it is to know that your town is not gonna be the subject of scandal and that your mayor is patient and kind and diligent. Thank God she came to us from the world of education, because like most, most talented educators, they allow people to blossom in their roles. They support those people. And I just wanna say to Mayor McDonough, I just can't thank you enough for being dignified and professional in the way that you conduct yourself. I cannot thank you enough. Ladies and gentlemen, have concluded all business related to tonight's special meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, all right.